I'm Joanne Richardson. I'd like to invite everybody to Common Ground for Texans. We are starting our fall programming now, having taken the summer off for a few months, trying months as they might have been, but we all need a break from time to time. So we did that. I do want to announce that we do know who our speakers will be for our October 17 meeting. Again, it's at 2 o'clock. And we have, in a sense, partnered with a group called Braver Angels that is working on a program called With Malice Toward None. And what we have done is to ask Art Markman and Bob Dukes, who are two guys on your head that you might recognize, and ask them to conduct a conversation on how to ameliorate hard feelings after the November election on one side or the other in preparation for, as some people might say, 6 million people will be upset and 6 million people will be absolutely elated, but how do we move forward as a country? And so we're going to try to tackle that issue. And so I hope that you will join us for that event. In preparation for today's meeting, the reason that we thought that it would be an important conversation to have is that we have several Austin City Council districts whose representatives for city council are up on the ballot. They're down ballot races, but they're important for local control and local issues. And so our question really was, how well is 10-1 living up to its expectations? Is it living up to its expectations? And how do we know? And what do we suspect? And does it represent the wide breadth of folks who live in the city of Austin? So we asked a couple of people to join us, and I hope Peck Young will be on the line shortly. But if not, we have two important people in this issue. Nelson Linder, who was a part of the original 10-1 Commission and also worked on putting this whole thing together, the 10-1 concept. I asked Peck to join us so that he could talk about the history and how we got to 10-1, and I hope that he'll be able to join us. And then Anthony Gutierrez with Common Cause, I should say Nelson's with NAACP. Anthony with Common Cause on how well from a financial aspect of 10-1 are we doing? And so I'll turn it over to our moderator, Mike Ignikowski, to introduce our folks a little bit more.
Thanks, Joanne. As Joanne said, there are five city council districts up for election this November. A little bit about the background and history here. Before 2012, Austin used to have a city council with six at-large members elected across the city, plus a mayor. And then in 2012, the people of Austin approved of going to 10 geographic districts, plus a mayor, hence the 10-1 name for this. In 2014, it was the first time we ran elections under that. So this has been going on for six years now, and we decided to take a look and see how it's going. Is it actually accomplishing the things we want to accomplish? And what other things the future might hold for improving on the process? As Joanne said, we had three panel members invited. What we're going to do is, the way we normally approach this thing, we'll give each of the panel members five, 10 minutes to talk about their views on both the history, the motivation for 10-1, and how it's working now. I'll ask them a few more questions. We'll have a discussion amongst ourselves. And then we'll have time for the audience members to have their questions. Now, you can actually ask your questions at any time by typing them in the chat window. They'll go right to Hamilton Richards, and then Hamilton will read off the questions when it comes time. So anytime the inspiration hits you to ask another question, feel free to type right away. So to get some of the history and motivation for 10-1, we've asked Nelson Linder to come on and talk with us. Nelson was born in Georgia, but he moved to Austin in 1981, graduated from Houston Toulon University, and he's been president of the Austin NAACP since the year 2000. And as Joanne mentioned, he was co-chair of the 10-1 Coalition. So he can give us quite a bit of background about what happened and why, and how it's going now. So Nelson, take it away.
Thank you very much, and I'm honored to be here today. A little history today. This morning, I was part of a panel. A new group is talking about forming a new system here altogether, a strong reform of government. I wanted to make sure I mention that because I'm talking about it later. In 1945, a gentleman named Arthur B. Dewey, who was probably Austin's greatest civil rights leader, began to organize black voters to participate in this political system. In 1951, he ran for office in a proportional system, and many folks said he won that election. He won the place on the council, but he was not given a seat. Well, after he ran for that particular seat, he went into a gradual at-large political system that basically had no minority representation. So my history starts with Arthur B. Dewey because he was kind of the pioneer, the spirit, and the basis for a charter of the city of Austin. Going forward, we got the at-large system, but we tried to make sure we had minority representation on a number of occasions. Finally, they came up with a thing called a gentleman's agreement. We're going to give you one blank and one in his bag to represent the community. Very problematic because, first of all, one person can't really do that. And secondly, folks who picked those people were not, in many cases, black people or even brown people. Very problematic. However, that system had been doing it for over 50 years. We kept fighting and fighting to change this system every time we lost a vote. Finally, in 2012, fellow named Peck Young, who's a motherfucker here, who are very well-known, got together, and we brought together 30 coalitions who had basically the same ideas about having their own political representation. And based on that political groundwork, the history, the understanding, 2014, we produced a 10-1 system. I'm making pretty fast here. Is this successful because of what you're talking about? I can certainly say the city council today is a more active than city council. That's one advantage. People like Greg, because I'm others, they wouldn't have been in an at-large system. But it's also a problem because when you talk about having minority representation, or any representation, there should be an alignment between the folks who get elected and those in the community who vote. I would say in terms of District 1, African-American, even 2, 3, and 4, oftentimes, there is not an alignment. So the issues like gentrification, displacement of the black population, police brutality, it still persists. So it's one thing to have black and brown folks on the council. Now, you've got, what, three Hispanic seats, one black seat. That's important. But more important sometimes is, what are people really addressing? Are they addressing the issues of discrimination that we called for? And I would say, in many cases, no. For example, there was an article in the American Statesman, I think last week. We talked about forthcoming census. And over the past 20 years, we've lost about 6,000 black people in the city. But between 2000 and 2018, we had a net increase of 25% population of black people. So what is happening in the city with displacement? Well, it's still continuing because, basically, on our current council, they're not addressing, for the most part, the impact of displacement, gentrification. And as a result, they created what we call residential segregation and economic. That's the fact that our school system and our population base is around 35. Well, to be honest, it's a very young system, very new system, but there's a lot of disappointment. Oftentimes, it doesn't appear to be a consensus. Money is still in politics. And from my standpoint as NAACP president, citing Arthur Dewey, I have very little in common politically with many folks on this city council who might look like me. That's a problem. So we have to be more mature. We can't just work in our districts. I've worked with Kat DeTolbe for years. She's a friend of ours. She's not black. So I think other districts themselves, you've got to understand, you've got to reach out to other people in other districts and build coalitions. And that's very hard to do in this kind of environment politically. But I would say 10-1 was refreshing to the extent it brought in a different mindset. It brought folks to the council who wouldn't have been elected under an at-large system. The problem is, many of them don't understand how they got there in the first place. And that's a problem. So we're having a very hard time addressing our current issues in the city. As a result, the racial wage income gap, the problem with housing, gentrification persist. And those are issues that affect black and brown people. Right now, there's a court issue with gentrification. We stopped it. But the city council oftentimes is aligned with the very same people who, in our opinion, create the problem in the first place. In short, I know we have a legal system based on the Voting Rights Act, but I'm disappointed that oftentimes, when we elect people from these districts, the money and the influence still goes in the wrong direction. So we have a challenge. We have a quid pro quo. There are ways to address that. You can elect people who are committed to your issues, who understand the history, as I mentioned, Arthur B. Dewey. And I think that'd be a much better system. The problem is, though, we don't control the outcome because money and influence still plays a role in politics. I won't name the people out, but big corporations and institutions still pretty much decide who owns or where the money goes. So I wouldn't just throw away the system. I would write in the lessons learned and try to pick candidates who are, number one, know their history, know their issues, and have the courage, the distinct courage, to stand alone if necessary and fight for the right things. And that's been a major problem, in my opinion, when I look at minority districts, 1, 2, 3, 4, and they were created, by the way, to do just that. They were created to address issues that we face in the large community. So I'm disappointed. I'm not going to throw it away yet. I think there's time for a conversation, how we can improve things. And I'll start by saying this. No matter what kind of system you have, you've got to pick the best candidates. Those are more qualified, those are more committed, those who have just narrow vision, but a broad vision still. You can look outside your district. So we struggle, in my opinion, with picking the most qualified candidates. We have the ability and the understanding that this entire city comes up with best practices to make sure that equity and equality, those kind of things, are extended to all people in the city. And I think that's our primary challenge. Are we there? No. Is there work to do? Yes. Are we disappointed? Yes. And I'll stop there.
Okay, thanks, Nelson. We'll definitely get back to this question about candidates or council members working on their own initiatives, not working in coalitions well enough, and the question of big money still influencing. And has Peck Young joined yet?
Yes. Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah. I apologize. I couldn't get somebody to let me go on the phone, and so I was late. There are people you just can't tell to shut up, so.
So Peck Young was a consultant to the 10-1 Coalition. He worked on helping draw the district maps. So we've asked him to come here on this panel. A little background, he graduated from UT in '71. He claims he almost got his law degree from there, but ran out of money first.
That's absolutely true.
And you're now an Austin Community College professor. Is that true?
No, I was never a professor. They never counted the LBJ School degree as sufficient. I was a head of the Center for Public Policy and Political Studies, but I retired about, almost a year ago now from there.
Okay. So Peck has worked on many campaigns in the area, from the federal to state to local areas, and campaigns. He's on the redistricting commission. And Peck, if you could tell us a little bit more about the process of getting this set up and drawing the districts, and your thoughts on how it's going now?
Well, those are three very interesting things. Let me tell you briefly about creating the process. We worked for almost 40 years to try to get geographic representation. And during most of that time, we did it the wrong way. We kept trying to get leadership through boards and commissions to recommend it to the citizens. And we were successful in getting it recommended numerous times. And each time, by some narrow margins, some wide margins, the voters rejected the idea. The time it worked, we gave up that sort of top-down approach and put together a citizens' coalition. And the citizens' coalition wrote the proposition, and they got a petition to put it on the ballot. And frankly, that was the way we were able to get it passed. The other thing we did that was different is that we got together a proposition in the proposition that said that politicians would not draw the lines. It was a citizens' board that would be appointed in a very elaborate way to be sure that there would not be gerrymandering on behalf of some elected official. And I know from the way people responded that that was a very important part of getting it passed because if there was any city in Texas that knew about gerrymandering, it was the capital of Texas. We put together almost 1,000 volunteers. We put together almost 100 organizations, from firefighters to the Republican Party to environmentalists, to just a broad cross-section of the city. And we passed it. The council stuck their own version of it, which was not really legitimate. It would not have included an African-American representative. It had at-large seats, so the majority of white people could have elected a majority of the council, and it failed. Ours passed by about 60%. As far as the drawing of the lines, I was a representative of the organization, the Austin Knights for Geographic Representation, the lead organizer. There was about six of us that worked on it. I attended all but one meeting of the commission. And our objective was to see to it that there were three Hispanic seats because Hispanics represented, at that time, about 32% of the population, and one African-American seat. And we were able to draw and recommend to the board and to work with the board, the ICRC, to get that objective accomplished. We were not involved in the drawing of the other six seats in any active way because we were not trying to lobby the rest of the seats into existence. Those were the ones that needed to be drawn by an independent board. I think, because I did redistricting all my life, and I did do gerrymandering for the Democratic Party on a number of occasions, and as a professional, that those seats were fair. They were drawn with an interest in neighborhood integrity. They were done with an interest in interests of folks. They were done with one person, one vote in mind. And I think they were done well. And so we ended up with what I think were fair districts. In those days, as my friend Nelson pointed out, the Voting Rights Act had not been gutted. So the obligation to provide protected minorities was met. And beyond that, I think we did a good job of building districts which represented the economic and social diversity of the city. And I think we've had good districts. I passed, as a consultant, 10-1, strangely enough, the same number down in San Antonio. I worked down there for a number of years and know that system well. And I will tell you that the difference, and I think it works better than this one did first time, the differences don't have anything to do systemically with how electing people occur. One, the system down there is almost 50 years old. It was created before money had become such a critical part of getting elected. Here in Austin, it also, we saw down there in the first elections, a couple of different things. One, we saw a mayor who was a leader. She had been a colonel in the wax. She was a lady who knew how to move people and motivate them. There was a true diversity of folks elected from the districts, but she melded them into a council who was responsible to their districts. I honestly don't think we got a mayor here who was a leader. I think he saw himself more as someone who was designed to manipulate councils into doing what he wanted them to. That was not what Lila Cockrell saw her job as. They had council members down there that were elected, frankly, who had better ideas about what their districts wanted. I think we got people here who were rookies, who had no clue what their districts wanted. And number three, it wasn't as expensive, even though that was a bigger city than ours at the time. And I think money talked here. And I am depressed by the fact that we have a number of council members who are basically bought in campaign contributions by a very small handful of real estate interests and real estate lobbyists. And in Austin, we've adopted a very clever way of doing that, in that the real estate interests will tell them that if they want, that they will vote for what we want, I mean, we being the real estate interests. You know, yes, if you want to. You want to propose mandatory sick leave? That's great, as long as you will vote to destroy neighborhoods. If you want to do something else socially liberal, that's fine, as long as you will vote for, you know, some other project that makes us money, some zoning case that makes us money, some other thing that is tied to the interests of our clients. In San Antonio, it was not that sophisticated. The business community down there was much more likely. By the way, is my wife celebrating the fact I think Oklahoma's losing a football game? It was much more sophisticated, business community, or less sophisticated. The business community wanted to tell you what to do all the time. And frankly, there were parts of the town represented by people who...
The state has the lead with six minutes.
Okay, baby. I'm on a Zoom call.
Sorry.
Okay. By the way, if you're interested, Oklahoma is losing. The bottom line was the business community wanted to tell you everything to do, and there were large parts of San Antonio who didn't care. It's more sophisticated now. So 10-1, or any system, a hybrid system, our at-large system, would all work depending on the quality of the voter, the sophistication of the special interests. And sadly, today, on the intervention of money. And the impact of money is one of the tragedies of American politics at all levels. I've worked long enough in politics to see money go from being important to becoming the entire lever by which politicians are moved unless they're very unique people. And this council, depressingly to me, very quickly turned itself over to the money changers. And I think that's a big weakness with this council. It's not how they were elected. It's what they did after they got elected.
Thanks, Peck. And we'll talk later about whether that influence of money is due to the 10-1 or just due to the Austin city nature. The joys of Zoom meetings in our work situation, we've kind of decided the three phrases that everyone will remember 2020 by are: You're still on mute? Can you hear me now? And what color is the sky where you're at? Anyway, the next panel member is Anthony Gutierrez. He's the executive director of Common Cause Texas. He's been involved in Texas politics the last 15 years, and he has also managed several political campaigns at the federal, state, and local level here. Anthony, can you tell us your thoughts on how things are working and what the future holds, including this election financing issue?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you all for having me here. So, I mean, first off, just like cosign everything that Nelson and Peck just talked about. So Common Cause, we do a ton of redistricting reform work at the statewide level, where national organizations do this work in a bunch of other states. And, you know, I know we're here to talk about sort of the 10-1 and like how it's working, how it's performing, and like, you know, things we can improve. And there's stuff. There is for sure some things, particularly about the campaign finance system as it relates to council. And that's the part I, you know, can sort of get into a little bit more. You know, I will also just say, like, it's, for me, I spend a lot of time talking about the, you know, the Texas Legislature and their drawing of districts. And, you know, I mean, in many ways, let's also just appreciate, like, Austin's not that, right? At least there's a system in place that is not that, just, you know, insanely bad system that has been bad for, I don't know, what, four or five decades at least, that they've had to go through various litigation to finally arrive at maps? But the thing that you all asked me to come talk about was just really the money piece. And so, you know, if the point of 10-1 was, you know, let's sort of get away from a system where one part of the city is electing everybody, in many ways, it did that, but not when it comes to money. When it comes to money, like, there is still just a few very affluent parts of town that are funding all the races. So we did two studies, looking at the 2016 election and the 2018 election. And I'll just give you some of the top lines. I'm more than happy to sort of share it in the chat if people want to dig into more of the details. But just really briefly, looking at 2016, there was about $1 million raised in that election. About 787,000 of it was people from Austin. And when you started digging into, like, where are these, where is the money coming from? It was the affluent districts, like 8, 9, 10. 87% of the money was coming from there. District 9 contributed the most of any council district, and District 9 wasn't on the ballot that year. It's really just kind of stunning when you think about, well, who can run, who can win? Like, it does come down to money in so many ways. On average, there was 34% of the money that a candidate raised in that year was raised from a person who would actually be able to vote for them. So, you know, that's like 70% of the people that they were getting money from, not people that actually could have voted for them. So in 2018, or it was, I don't know, about a year ago, Phil Preisen, who y'all probably know, was the political reporter at KXAN until just recently, did an update on the report. Two really interesting things that I thought that he came up with, looking at current council members, or sort of current. Delia Garza was one that he looked at, who, she, for her race, raised $63,000, with 95% of it coming from out of her district. Greg Cassar was 145, 92% out of his district. And, you know, we're not, you know, Common Cause, I believe the same is true for Common Grounds, like, you know, we are nonpartisan. Like, we do not endorse candidates, even for nonpartisan offices. But like, just as like a guy that lives in Austin, like, Greg and Delia are elected officials who, I feel like these are people who are in this for the right reason. Like, I don't ever get the impression they're like, I don't know, like some other elected officials, we might think, that are just like, oh, these people are not here to represent the people. Like, while we may not agree with all the stuff they did, like, I feel like they, like a lot of people who we know, are like, really genuinely trying to represent the people that they represent. But it really illustrates the problem. Like, even if you're one of those people, you're running in the campaign finance system that requires you to raise obscene amounts of money. Even if you're in Austin and you have really low contribution limits, you've just got to get a bunch of money via those contribution limits, right? And that means you're not spending as much time knocking on doors and like phone banking. You've got to go do fundraisers in parts of town where the money is. You've got to go sit in a room and call people who live in the parts of town that are probably not your district. So it is, it's true in Austin, the same as it's true with the federal government and Texas Legislature. Public policy really bends in the direction of wealth. So even if you really want to do good things, like, it can be really tough because you just don't get the opportunities to just walk around your district and talk to people when you've got to be doing call time in a room talking to donors. So, you know, I think Nelson alluded to, there is a group taking another run at a public financing program right now. And that, we were part of an effort a couple of years ago when the Charter Review Commission was meeting to try to get a public financing program called Democracy Dollars on the ballot. And that is the piece, that is the same program, I think, with some alterations. But there, this group that is currently taking a shot at this for next year, I think they're taking that same program. And hopefully, we get to just chat a bit about sort of what that program is and how it might work at some point in this conversation.
Sure, thanks. So, again, I want to mention people can ask questions in the chat, and we'll go to a brief discussion now amongst the panel members. So I say, Peck, your hand is raised.
Yeah, may I say something?
Please.
One of the things about geographic representation is it does change how much money you have to raise. The mayor's races in Austin, and I've been in... The mayor's races in Austin, and I've been involved in mayor's races since the seventies. Are obscenely expensive compared to even what they were in the seventies. The, and they, and they are the, they are what it costs to run at-large, period. Okay. You now, you do not have to in. Districts, for instance, on the east side. Need to raise a million dollars to run. At-large races had become before 10-1. At least if you were going to be viable, you at least have to add 500 to 600,000 dollars. Now, I do not disagree with my friend from Common Cause at all about the fact that. Dialing for dollars has become a national pastime. Whether you are city council or you are governor or whatever. But the one virtue that we have with geographic representation. Is that you are a viable candidate in a lot of districts, frankly. Uh, any district you're viable. If you have 60 to 70,000 dollars. That does not mean in rich districts on the west side, you don't try to raise 100, 150, 200,000. But. A Delia or a Kassar or a PO, uh. Or Ora Houston, who's the last candidate I, I had anything to do with in the black community. Could be viable with 50 grand. That is not a million. The mayor, on the other hand, has not spent less than a million anytime he has ever run for anything. And the candidates who have tried to run against him have had to raise. Six digits to lose. So one of the things that 10-1 does is it does not remove the influence of money by any stretch of the imagination. And I testified for Democracy Dollars and believe in that concept. But it does change the volume. And that does make some difference. Because it makes people. Who could not conceivably even make a race for city up government in the past. Viable candidates. Delia. Kassar. PO. Ora. Were not have even been considered viable under the old system. In which we gave the minorities one seat that the whites got to pick. They wouldn't have been able to even have put their names on the ballot. And they were all not only viable, but they were also electable under 10-1. So I don't disagree that money is a deciding factor. And it can be a corrupting factor, which I would argue is also true. But at least we've changed the price downward. So that people of quality in many cases. Uh, like Ora. Uh, in particular. Uh, and you can argue about the Hispanics among yourselves. Uh, but PO certainly, who I've known for years and who is someone. With great sincerity of how well he votes can be open to discussion. Would never have had the opportunity to have served their community. If we had not had districts in which they didn't have to run, didn't have to raise high six figures to be considered viable.
Nelson, Anthony comments?
Sure, first, let me say this while the time is aligned, I want to thank Beck Young because. His work in the city, you know, civil rights and knowing Arthur B. DeWitty, natural history. Has made a tremendous difference. Without his understanding, a lot of us wouldn't be here. So I hope he's recognized for what he is, a fair man who had a commitment to civil rights, he knew Arthur DeWitty, Boma Olton. Had we listened to him early on, this would be a better city. Let me say this. If you're not addressing civil rights in any city today in this country. You see what happens? The police issues that we've been addressing for 20, 30 years, the housing issue, the gentrification. We're saying that for years and all of a sudden we have an emergency and everybody's woke. Well, you shouldn't have woke a long time ago. And we'll say this as a warning. This city council is adverse to civil rights despite having four minority seats. What that means is, we talk about, what do you want to do about gentrification? In a real way, police issues, not just nonsense about defunding people, but about real issues that address the cause of equity and reallocation resources. You get nothing. And they tell me, well Nelson, I only got, uh, one vote. Here's what I say about the city in this country. If you have one vote, you speak up and speak out, you can literally change the world. It didn't stop Arthur B. DeWitty. Didn't stop Boma Olton, didn't stop Beck Young, so what I see is a certain kind of hypocrisy. You have to be committed to number one, producing a better city where the incomes are more equal. This ratio income gap is killing this city and it's killing this, this country. When I say the council, they can't even handle this question about it. So I'm a little frustrated because I realize that until we. Close that gap about politics and civil rights and equity, because people talk about it, but they don't, they don't address it. That's my main frustration. If we're going to save this city, we need leadership that has ability, number one, to articulate the causes. And number two, to mobilize the population the right way, it needs something with substance. Because right now, I'm gonna tell you something with the police issue, with the homeless issue, it's a disaster. And I'll stop here.
Thanks. Anthony, do you?
Thank you, my friend.
It's a tough act to follow.
Yet, um. Yes, again, again, I agree with. Everything that we just said from both, um, the only thing I would just add, I think, um, just to add on to what, what Beck was talking about. For sure, the, um, you know, 10-1, having smaller districts, obviously now it reduces the amount of money someone has to raise. Brings better. Gives the opportunity to people who may not have been able to run at-large for sure. Um, I think, you know, and I think that's sort of the theme of like. Everything we're sort of talking about today is just like, 10-1's, you know, in, in many ways, an improvement. I think the public financing piece is just kind of like. You know, uh, the next step forward, really, it's the, the thing that, um, was really illustrated, I, I, I think a bunch of y'all were there. Um, about two, two years ago, I guess, we brought a, um. Uh, a young woman, a council member from Seattle down to do a town hall for us, her name was Twosim, was Kevah, and had the most fascinating story. Just her sort of like personal narrative about how she ran for office, like she worked at the AFL-CIO as a, uh, political director. Like she, she was an organizer, basically, she was an organizer who had no wealth, no like ties to wealthy people. Um, still was like living in an apartment, had student loans, like a bunch of debt. Like, it, it made no sense for her to run for office, but they had the Democracy Dollars program like new to Seattle. And what she did have was really strong community ties and the ability to just talk to people and just like. Hey, there's this democracy, uh, democracy voucher is what they called them up there, like your democracy voucher. Um, that you just received in the mail, like if you give that to me, I can use that to run my campaign. And she just organized like, you know, big house parties with her, uh, you know, friends in labor and. Whatnot and was able to win and was just a radically different, uh, type of council member than what they had previously had. And it's, it's the kind of story that is like, that is what's possible if there's. Just a different type of campaign finance scheme implies that, um, you know, than what we currently have.
Thanks. So. Nelson was expressing a lot of frustration with the way things are actually working out on the council. Um, and we all heard that, uh, let's, let's talk about that right now, uh, how well it's reflecting the city of Austin. The stats I heard that Austin is about 65% democratic. But the council is essentially 100% Democrats. I just kind of get some feedback on. Is this working the way people expected it to in terms of geographical? Uh, identity and, uh, reflection of minorities or even the political. Diversity in the city. Is that a problem? Because that's not getting reflected properly.
Well, the answer is yes. Look. We have three minorities, we have three Hispanics and one black and. But there is nothing magical, uh. You know, about someone's ethnic or racial cup back, back, you know, background, providing that they're going to vote certain ways. You know, they're African-Americans for Trump, for the love of God. Uh, you know, the, the truth of the matter is. Is that communities have to be provided with sophisticated candidates. And then the, the communities themselves have to become sophisticated enough to elect people. They're going to do a good job of representing them. The other thing that I've learned doing politics. Is what is a good job of representing them? People want people to take care of their needs and at least a couple of these candidates, I know, these council members. Do a wonderful job of taking care of their geography.
Yep, they do.
Uh, in the sense of that. Specifically, and I don't want me to keep mentioning him, but I, I know this for a fact and he's a good example. Councilman Renteria has had more things done in the area he represents than has been done in that area in 50 years. And if you live in that area, you think you've got a good council member because you've been a part of the city that nobody did anything but drive-through. And now you've got stop signs, you've got your parks fixed, you've got all kinds of activity in that area from the city. Now, between you and me, I have a hunch. From what I've been told by my sources at City Hall, that he's done it in the most traditional way for a, for a single-member district. Council member, he's traded votes. The mayor needs something, well, he needs something. So he gets, he gets services. And the mayor gets a vote for some zoning someplace and PO don't care because it ain't in his district. Now, that is not how, that is not quote, good government, but it sure as hell is for the people in a part of town that has been forgotten. You know, since people quit running horses out there. So what is, what is representation of an area? You know, sophisticated white people who go to college think it's some kind of esoteric thing. I can assure you as someone who's done this all my life, you know, a hell of a lot of people who live in a certain area of town. May think that, you know, his voting record may be one thing, but the fact that we've got services we've never had makes him one hell of a council member. And that's, you know, that's part of what a democracy is about, is you've got to get a balance. Between taking care of the folks and how, what you do to how to do, how to get that done. And frankly, I'm not sure taking care of the folks and the big part of being a good politician. I've had congressmen and senators I've worked with. Who, who voted right and were lousy community, were lousy community service people. And I've had others that took care of their districts like, you know, they were their children and voted badly. And guess which ones got elected most consistently and which I had to work harder to keep in office. And the truth is, is that in a representative democracy, I kind of think y'all would be both. But the voters give priority to the people to take care of their people. And so that's one thing. Uh, you know, and that's, the other thing is, is that. When people say, well, Austin's a, a progressive community, well, it never has been, I've lived here 70 years. We do, we, we're, we're liberal in press releases, I've never known us to be progressive and damn near anything else. What we are is one giant land swindle from the time that Maripou B. Lamar. Lied about the fact that, you know, we wanted a Comanche settlement up here. So he could get his, his share of the land grabs that were. Houston was getting down there in that swamp he was selling. To this given day. We are a giant goddamn hustle. And if accidentally somebody benefits from it. It, the business community here for the last 150 some odd years. You know, and damn near 200. You know, that's fine. But the truth is, is that this has never been a progressive or liberal community, not really. You know, Ora and I went to segregated schools and when we integrated and we did it backwards. And the truth of the matter is, and Nelson knows this. That you, if you do anything really progressive, you have to do it over the dead bodies of the business community. And that's the way this has always been, so the fact this council is conservative. That it, that gentrification is, you know. For 90 years, they told the black community to live east of 35. And then they started about four or five years ago to tell them to live in Maynor. You know, that's, that's. And we think that because they started doing it with a single-member district council, that that's weird. They've been doing it for 100 years now, so what, you know. What did you think? We elected a bunch of, you know, genies in a bottle? You know, nothing but, you know, big, big things don't change quickly. It just don't, okay? And Austin hadn't changed that much. The business community hasn't suddenly turned progressive. It hadn't been for 100 years or more, why in hell do you think it's going to be now? You know, 10-1's a, a, a mechanism to give people in different parts of town an opportunity to elect somebody that gives a damn about them. Instead of having 10% of the people elect everybody on the council, so they just all give a damn about that 10%. But it didn't change the attitude of the power brokers in this city. And the power brokers in this city haven't been progressive. And the Democratic Party they control has had fits of being progressive. I was part of that when I was executive director under a man named Ken Windler. But Ken and I moved on and the Democratic Party went back to being what it was, which was a representative of the power structure. You know? You know, I'm, I'm always fascinated when people saying, well, it doesn't seem representative of Austin. Which Austin? The one in the press releases or the one we live in?
So I'm glad to hear that, that Beck is now a, an independent, welcome to the club, Beck.
No, I'm a Democrat, Austin isn't, okay?
This is, this is a, a conversation that we have back and forth, but I just wanted to say hello. This is Linda Curtis, the Bastrop Woman. Uh, out here and, uh.
Good to see you, Linda.
Good to see you and I, I appreciate the expletives, we went on, on with that for two years. But, um, when people tell me that, you know, 10-1, they questioned whether it was a success. I don't really get that because it did what it was supposed to do. Now, now what? What are we going to do about the fundamental? You know, problem.
Linda, let's, I want to get your panel members to, uh, have a chance to follow up on that if, if they want to follow that act.
Let me just say this.
I just wanted to ask Nelson to opine on, on what's next. Thank you.
Okay, great question, and by the big sport. Let's be very serious for a moment. Not just the city, this entire country is under crisis. The truth is, we haven't addressed racism and the fact of racism. People are tired of that right now, you see it all over the country. So here's a final question. When I came in 1981 from Georgia, of all places. Nobody knew about the Massacre of 20, we didn't even talk about it. Now they know about it, they talk about it, they do nothing. So what's the point? Here's the point. This city has to have a vision where everybody is a, is accommodated as human beings. That's not that hard to do. You can write and draft policies that create meaningful jobs to address the cost of living. If the black median income here can't increase in 20 years, what's the damn problem? How you all live here? Of course you're going to displace people. So we're living in a very, very serious and dangerous moment. I don't think we get that, if you don't get that, look at Portland, look at Seattle, look at Minneapolis, people are not getting that. They don't want fake leadership. They want folks who care about people, who understand politics, who are qualified to address the issues in this city. That's what democracy is about, the people, really, that's where the work comes from. So my thing is, and I'm trying to convey this to everybody. Having a black person on the city council, just in terms of presence, is not power. Responsibility, ideology, understanding of government, those things are equally important. So when we elect people, we got to find folks, number one, understand Austin, understand business. Understand politics and can write policies that might offend somebody. If we don't offend somebody in this city who has money and power, we're going to be even in more trouble. Let me say this and stop. In 1999, I ran for Austin City Council, nobody even knows it, which is a good thing, by the way. Good thing, and I learned so much about government from the inside. My platform was police. Reform. Not defund. Refund. People didn't give a damn, and that's okay. So here we are in 2020, what are we talking about? Defunding? No, 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 you got to write policies to hold people accountable. It's really that simple. Somebody's body going to lose, terminate them. Fight them. And stand up. So what I'm saying is, regardless of the political system. You've got to find folks, number one, who are qualified. And number two, have a certain amount of courage, of courage and understanding. And four. I wanted to, 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 to miss some things. If you're going to stand up and, and, and take people's money and power, well, guess what? There might be a few sacrifices. I'm not rich, but I have an insurance agency, my dad taught me a few things. The folks who you criticize will not pay you, that's how they're complicated, right? So what I'm trying to convey here is that whatever government we get. We, we better understand the consequences and not. Dressing our core problems, not just in Austin, in this entire nation. That's what you support is what you get. Hope I addressed some of your points, Linda, who I also respect your work because. You've always been sincere to the point. I don't know why we have such an issue with honesty because that's another conversation, we got to tell it the way it is. Until we do that, and not, look. If everybody, there's, there's an article called "The Case for Business Equity." By 2050, this city, this nation. Will be majority people of color. What are you going to do about that? If you can't do it now, what's going to happen then? This is about the future of Austin and America. Thank you.
Thank you, this is turning into a much more interesting and bigger question, bigger discussion than we anticipated. And I, I'm almost sad some of our regulars are, are missing all of us here. Uh, we do want to go to. Uh, we do want to go to questions from the rest of the audience here. I want to give Anthony before you.
Yeah, so it is being taped, so we will put this up on our website and we will encourage people to listen to it. As, as always.
Anthony, have you got anything to add there?
I don't, no.
Okay, um. Hamilton, are we getting questions coming in from the audience yet?
Now, don't forget you're competing with a Texas football game. We're not nearly as entertaining as, as a game.
Yes, we do have a bunch of questions. First, we have.
Speak up a little.
A piece of information from Joanne McKenzie. Are you ready for a question now?
Yeah, just speak up a little.
Okay.
Where'd my microphone work? Near my mouth. There we go. Is that better? Uh, Joanne McKenzie says that her understanding that the recently filed Republican lawsuit against Governor Abbott. Challenging his authority to extend early voting. Because of that, we don't yet know whether early voting will start on October 13th or the 19th.
Well, that's not, that, that, that's true legally. You know, if they, if the, the current Republican Party, which is in the hands of people with their hair on fire. And who simply don't believe anybody that's, that's not white should vote. Uh, God only knows, you know, what will happen. Uh, and the Supreme, the Republican Supreme Court is. Closer, I think, probably to the current leadership of the party than it is to the governor. So technically she's correct. Uh, there will have to be an expedited hearing. Uh, on that issue. Uh, because obviously of the timeline we're facing. Um, and so we, we don't technically know what the deal is. Uh, we'll just find out when the court acts.
My understanding is that. Because of the way the court has acted previously on his executive powers. That it is likely that um, the early voting time period will remain. And that they, they will not be successful in their suit.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Like PEC said, like, who knows with this Supreme Court, like, there's. There's no way to really know, but, but it, it does seem like it would be really difficult because so much of the prior. Litigation, um, a, all the rulings basically said like, the reason they weren't going to do vote by mail expansion was because there was that extra week of early voting. So people would have the opportunity to vote safely. So like, you know, if you take. Take away that, then it really sort of undercuts every previous thing, which, I don't know. Not to say they won't find some way to just sort of like. Tie themselves in knots with tortured logic to cut off that week of early voting, but it, it would be tough.
So another question. Joanne Richards asks. Once we have single member districts rather than an at-large city council, what prevents fiefdoms from developing?
Well, the most common thing is that we have in, under our charter. Uh, an ultimate limit on the number of terms. You can serve two terms and then you can petition for a third. And so ultimately you have to leave office. The also, uh, fiefdoms are sort of a creation of another century. Uh, when there was true political machines. To what limited extent Austin has that sort of apparatus that exists at the countywide level of. Through the Democratic Party operations and through some, some of the Republican Party operations. Because, and the, the third thing is. Uh, unless we go nuts with the idea of a strong uh, mayor. The fiefdoms existed in the last century because there was patronage. You could decide who picked up trash in your district. You decided who, you know, did various city services and so you could hand out jobs. Uh, I don't think we're headed back in that direction in terms of any strong mayor system. So there's very little for a council member to give out in terms of patronage. And without patronage, it's a little hard to be able to create any kind of real political apparatus. Uh, beyond maybe a couple of aides and so forth. And so there's hard to create any kind of real fiefdom.
I agree, by the way, with uh. That comment totally.
Dan Echam asks, what about a proportional system as is used in Cambridge, Massachusetts? Which uses ranked choice voting without districting and allows for minority representation? Without needing to have special districts drawn?
Well, at least in the South, we looked at that a little bit. At least in the South. Traditional patterns of housing also follow uh, patterns of distribution of minorities. And I also looked at the whole idea along with some other people about this. You, this guy goes first, this guy goes second. And again, in the South, unless you absolutely require people to split their votes. We had a system for a while here where you peep, you know, the first candidate got the office, second candidate got the office and so forth. And frankly, what people would do was cast all their votes for the white, the white guys would cast all their votes for the white guy. So they would guarantee, the blacks would all vote for the black guy. And those days, nobody, female, by the way, ran, so I'm not being racist when I say guy or sexist. Uh, and so, so, so all the seats were filled by white people. And the person that came in, in those days, I believe there was five council members. Mr. DeWitty always came in six. Um, the ranked voting system uh, may work in places where people are familiar with it. But down here, it's usually been used to rig elections so that certain people were sure to get elected. And as I said, housing has, has in the South. Been a mechanism where people are grouped by ethnic group. And so it's one of the easiest ways to assure ethnic representation has been to do geographic representation. So that was the reason that we, we discarded anything but that traditional pattern. Uh, in time, uh. That system may work better. Because what is happening at the edges of our society here in the South. Is the Asian community is not tending to huddle. Quite frankly, like everybody, other ethnic communities have done. And it may be the one way we did in time, we could provide them with a fair chance to win. Uh, because they're not going into uh, masses in one place. But for the moment, the best way that I found and that the people that helped me study this over the, this, I'm going to say hi. All the way back to the LBJ School. Is that in the South, geographic representation is the only. Uh, well, it's not the only, but it is the most fair and historically equitable way to assure. Uh, minority representation um, in communities.
And if you examine the South, the deep south where I'm from. We passed a voter rights act and had single member districts. Our representation more than could group all over the South. So truly in most scenarios, that works correctly. Now, Austin, Texas did follow that pattern. That's another conversation. But in the South, you know, that works. So I think it's important. The second thing is. This city is one of the most economically segregated cities in the nation. Major problem because what it did is it undermined our school system in East Austin entirely. So we got a major problem here that needs to be addressed in so many different fronts. Because the economic segregation, we don't talk about that very much, but that housing factor, big mention. And look at these schools, they're not going, they're one of these thoughts in terms of students of color. So this, this is a very complicated city in so many ways that requires a certain kind of understanding and also intervention.
Yeah. Segregation by, by economic and racial patterns. Physical segregation is a tradition. All over Texas and all over the Southern United States. I've not studied Massachusetts. I have been studying census data since I was in college. And if you want to have representation of minorities and poor people, you follow the, you follow the, the geographic lines down here. You may be able to do something else in some other part of the country, but not in Texas, I can assure you. And it has been that way for a very, very long time. And I have not seen anything in a census. In my entire lifetime, and I've been doing this professionally now for 40 years, 35 at least. It's not going to change, I don't think. In my lifetime, it may, and the person who's calling in is young. They may live to see a change, but certainly Nelson and I are not going to live to see a change.
Districts without gerrymandering.
I should just stick in a little comment from Dan Echam who says, quote, that's not the Cambridge system. So I'll let, I'll let the two of you hash that offline.
I can clarify if y'all want.
That's up to the moderator.
Well, how many other questions do we have, Dan? Ham?
Oh, we've got at least half a dozen, maybe, maybe eight.
Uh, let, let's go to additional questions here then. And we'll come back to that maybe later if we have time.
Okay, Cindy Wetherby asks, are there known geographic areas that need attention in the redrawing of the districts that's coming up?
We won't know that till we see the census. Uh, my hunch, because. Unlike, unlike the SMSA, the standard met, the metropolitan area. Austin has not grown that much. The preliminary numbers that I've had access to show that Austin's only grown about a hundred thousand people, whereas the SMSA is grown. Uh, by something in the, in the magnitude of like 600,000, 700,000. But until we actually have hard data. In terms of the necessary representation issues. We won't be able to tell that until we have those in our hands and the census is not going to release those until probably sometime next year.
Next question is from Mary Cullenade. What do you think the chances are that the state legislature and the governor will stop democracy dollars? Is there anything being done at that level to make sure democracy dollars are possible?
What is going to happen at the legislature all has to do with who is elected to the House of Representatives. Uh, if there is a democratic majority, then the governor. Was not going to waste his bullets on trying to, to deal, even though he hates Austin. On trying to deal with an issue like democracy dollars in Austin, Texas. Because he has bigger fish to fry and trying to keep. The House of Representatives from uh. Fighting him over much bigger issues. If he controls both houses of the legislature. Uh, God knows what he'll do. And stopping Austin from doing anything, if not declaring it the, you know, uh, city in which he takes total control of is possible. So the, what is, who controls the House of Representatives, which party controls the House of Representatives? Will determine a great deal about how Austin is treated uh, by the governor.
And, and I was just throwing there that there was a, so they, they actually did take a shot at this last legislative session. Uh, Senator Huffman carried a bill that would have preemptively banned any Texas municipality from adopting a, a, a public financing program like democracy dollars. Um, but you know, this is, uh, all of the groups that work on sort of democracy issues, voting rights stuff. Um, not very good at getting things passed in the last, I don't know, decade or so. But have gotten better at killing some of the really, really bad stuff. And that's one of the ones that, um, the bill. Made it out of Senate and went to the House, but it along with SB nine, which I'll remember was the terrible voting rights thing. Um, you know, there was a pretty good um, coalition of groups that were working to stop those and uh. Yeah, SB 974 was one of the ones that died in the heap at the end of legislative session. So it's, you know, even. Even if Democrats did not take the House, there was a realistic possibility that, you know, Austin could pass democracy dollars and. We'd be able to keep the legislature from uh, killing it off.
Well, I hope you're right, you're, but I know that if we control the House, they'll pass, they, they can, they could pass something abolishing Austin in the Senate. But if, I hope you're right, if we can, if they control the House, if we control the House, then it's dead. Just by definition, and they may not even make the effort. So, but you're right, I, I, you're correct that, that there are enough. Sane people in the House that were last time, maybe there will be this time too.
There's a whole blank panel session we could probably have on like, what the hell is the legislature going to do next year? There's a very good chance they do absolutely nothing except the things they're legally required to do and go home. So.
That may be our November topic.
But the, one of the things they're required to do is read districts. So God knows what else. That's why I'm saying he may spend his bullets on that. Then rather than blowing up Austin.
So next question, uh, Linda Curtis would like PEC to talk about Voice of Austin and its goals.
Voices of Austin is a educational organization. Uh, here in Austin, working on city issues. Uh, we have, we have right now three priorities. Uh, one of which is Code Next and educating people on that. One of which is Project Connect, uh, and one of which is Police Reform. Uh, we uh, are. Funded by donations. Uh, I have a board which is headed by Senator Gonzalo Barrientos and Jan Lehman. It includes uh. Uh, Ory Houston, former council member and a number of other people. I'm not going to sit here and read names. And we are aggressive about informing people on what we believe are the essentials on those issues. Uh, and we're going to be involved in doing that uh, up through this election and then beyond. We're, we're not, we're not going, we're not an election only organization. So that's the essence of what Voices of, of Austin is. I'm the executive director of the organization.
Okay, um, Lance Vincent would like to know. In the context of, of money influence, how do we get around Citizens United?
Be honest, will you uh, pray to God that after we elect a democratic president? We, a couple of Republican, conservative justices drop dead.
Okay, um, Shernaz Garcia asks, how does the current system that gives power to the city manager more than the mayor? Affect what we're talking about? It seems to override the public opinion as well as council votes, as we saw with the recent situation with Brian Manley.
It does. Um.
Who want to explain what that situation was?
Well, they, they, the council wanted to fire him and because the. The elected, the, the executive officer of, of city manager cities is the city manager. You don't elect your executive. The, the president of Austin is the city manager. The governor of Austin is the city manager. And the city manager, which I think showed great restraint and good judgment, but the point is, whether he did or not, it's his decision. Council. Council has no control. There are a lot of reasons. I wrote a 30 something page, paper on this when I was in graduate school. The point is, is what kind of strong mayor, which the mayor would become the executive under a strong mayor system? What kind of a strong mayor system do you have? And if the strong mayor system is like the one, say, for instance, in Houston. Where the mayor is the policymaking executive. And you have a manager to do. Professional things done by a mayor. You know, by managers like decide how, how you run the trash pickup or the water service. That is a sophisticated system in which I've worked in Houston and works very efficiently. Uh, if you try to go back to the days where. The mayor is actually picks who gets hired, you know. Uh. To pick up trash, which is the old boss system, then you can have something that can become abusive. The whole point is. Is that what you have to decide is what kind, if you want a strong mayor, which I happen to think is more democratic. You have to decide what kind of strong mayor system you want to have. Uh, Mayor Adler wants that kind of, wants a strong mayor system. But he's never been clear the nature of the strong mayor system he wants. And. Nelson, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, regarding, regarding that question, uh, let's be very, very clear. In, in many ways, in this whole discussion regarding Manley. Uh, the city manager was sacrificed. In reality, had the city council had a much extensive larger conversation, we could have addressed that by saying, look. These issues are systemic, their culture, their immune academy. It's so easy to pick one person and talk to that person. Rather than going outside of their, their council chambers and talking to the whole community, they chose not to do that because of fear and other things. Had they done their homework, they've added, and most people, for example, law assistance network. Look. Nothing in this country is perfect. We know now around this nation that most folk want a certain kind of change in the police policies, but not to destroy the department. But if you got a city council that runs in the eyes of an issue, then all of a sudden you throw rocks at the city manager, he doesn't know what to do. So the whole thing got thrown off course, which, which I'm saying is, look. You can't just sit in, in the chambers and entertain one of the people on Zoom from the same organization. You've got to reach out and call folks like, look, why do you think Nelson and other people about police issues? What have you done for the past 50 years? We've done a lot. It's almost like the Constitution. If you have a bad year, you don't, you don't destroy the Constitution. You're going to. It's almost like the Constitution. If you have a bad year, you don't, you don't destroy the Constitution, you're going to amend it. But if you sit downtown and no one is supposed to come down there, you have a very narrow perspective. So it's not really about, 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 about calling Manley is a failure in our elected officials who chose to do nothing but pretend it was doing something in the budget, what they really didn't do to soothe some people's minds. It happened all over the country. And right now, people are walking their stuff back to what it used to be, which is a realistic conversation where all the people are involved in that conversation. Not just supposed to throw rocks at you and be on Zoom every week. They made a major mistake. It was a tremendous failure of political leadership.
Yeah, when, when you have council members making, trying to run things, that's where you do get into patronage issues. You know, Nelson and I totally agree, there are major things that need to be done. And, and we have done them, but we need more to do to reform our police department. You cannot have a police department in what was once a Confederate capital and do not have to do an ongoing process to make it better, more sensitive and more responsive to the community and especially to its minority community. But the Austin Police Department has made progress. I was born into a city that had two police departments and they were segregated. The black people were policed by black policemen and the white people by white policemen. And that's idiotic, but that's what, when I was a child, what we had. We've come a long ways, God knows, from that kind of insanity. But there's still work to be done. But the city council thought they did something about racial justice by getting rid of the horses. I never met a racist horse in my life. I mean, that's not moving forward. That's just pandering and taking things that, you know, make you feel good. That's not solving the problem. They got rid of a cadet class that was the first majority minority cadet class. Now, we may need serious changes, serious changes at how we train our cops. But firing the kids who were majority minority as cadets isn't part of changing the process. It's again, just pandering to people, just doing something for the sake of doing something. And furthermore, if you're going to figure out how to do something better, you don't do it with a bunch of city council members, not one of whom is a criminal justice expert. You bring in experts, experts that are minorities, that they've got degrees in this stuff, because criminal justice is not, you know, wearing a badge and a pistol anymore. It's something that's a science and you commission them to fix it. The idea that Jimmy Flanagan, who is evidently can't keep books in his checkbook, is in charge of the police department now just terrifies me. Not because I think Flanagan's a racist, I think Flanagan's an incompetent. And, and we need to have people who are committed and have know, know what they're doing to fix things. And this is, this council is just doing stuff because it makes them feel good. And that's silly.
And if I may quickly, guys like me, women like me, the whole nation, if you want to deal with the police issues, you've got to have district attorneys who have the ability and the courage to indict people and convict folks when they break the law. The law is very, very, very clear. If, if your DA office is not doing its job by holding people accountable, they hold me accountable, us accountable, you've got a problem. The problem doesn't start with the police. And I wish we had a chief who could say, look, here's what we're going to do. You've got to have, you've got to have an academy that makes some adjustments. But at the end of the day, if there is a person who means shot, kill or harm, it's district attorney. It's amazing how in this city, we will address it in a serious way. You've got to elect somebody who, number one, will do thorough comprehensive investigations. Number two, we never hear this. You've got, you've got a penal code that's antiquated so much that it's like the Civil War. It needs to be rewritten to current situations. I mean, for example, you know, you talk about objectivity when a police officer kills somebody. Really? What a police officer believes, we need to challenge that. I'm sorry, that's too much power. It's, it's too easy in this country for a police officer to make a decision to harm somebody without a real accountability scrutiny. Make minimum force necessary mandatory. Make response to resistance mandatory. If you violate that, I'm sorry, you've got to be held accountable. That's how we got here. We want to hold anybody accountable. Nobody. Counselor can't do that. It's not their job.
So the, the next question is from David Jones, and I'd like to ask Mr. Jones if he thinks his question has already been dealt with. You need to unmute yourself.
Yes, yes, I do. It's been covered in, well, at least I tried.
Okay, our, our next question is from Sam Martin. He asks if there is a provision for delayed redistricting if there's a delay in census data.
If I remember how we wrote the law, the actual date of the beginning of the process is not a calendar date. It requires that we have availability to the full census data. So in other words, it doesn't start on X day of X month. It starts at approximate time after the, the members have been chosen. But it does require that they have access to full census data. In other words, they're not supposed to start doing it based on preliminary data or, you know, first, you know, first cut. So if the, now, they are supposed to do it by a deadline of, I believe it's in this case, 2021. So they may find their, their window squeezed. I think December twenty twenty one is a deadline. But the date, the start date is, is dependent in terms of full deliberations on, on the availability of, of the full information.
Okay, we have one more question. And it's not strictly related to our topic, but I'll ask it anyway. This is from Linda Curtis. She says, can you ask PEC what he thinks about the possibility that yesterday's court ruling against the straight ticket ban will hold, or is it not too late? My understanding, or her understanding, is that ballots have been printed.
Yes, ballots have been, for instance, they'll mail the early vote ballots starting, I believe, Monday to people. And that's going to be litigated. So I, I don't think it's going to affect this election. I think it's too late. I just don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's going to be something that, at this point, that's going to be, I just don't think it's going to be something that will affect the actual election because in counties like Travis and Harris and Dallas and so forth, I don't think they have time to adjust their ballots.
Any more questions there?
Well, Joanne responds that ballots were printed when Greens were permitted on the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is an elaborate process. One of my, my very first job out of general, out of my graduate school was as an election administrator in the days when the party had to provide their own administrators. And I can assure you, ballot printing is something that you do way back on the timeline. And so unless there is some gross error or something, I mean, we, one time I was an administrator when we literally had a person who had died and their name had to stay on the ballot because there was no way we had the time to reprint ballots. And, and this was in a time when Travis County was a whole lot smaller than it is now. And the, everybody took it to court and judges smiled at us and said, you know, I'm deeply sad that the individual has passed away, but their name or names on the ballot because we cannot disrupt the election. So I don't think it's going to matter.
Linda says that she got her ballot, her absentee ballot yesterday in Bastrop.
The big, big counties, I don't think have mailed yet, but they will one year sometime. It's not going to, and I just don't think it matters.
And that, that's the end of our questions. The chat, the chat is still open if somebody wants to send in another one.
Okay, Dan Ekum, I kind of cut you off earlier. You were going to clarify some of the things about the Cambridge voting system. I apologize that. I just wanted to give everyone else a chance to get the large number of questions. And did you want to clarify anything now or?
Okay, sure. I, I think it's worth mentioning, it's different from the multi-member districts that were used in the South previously. It's a, I believe they have 10 council members like we do. And they don't use districts, but they use a proportional election method, a ranked choice method, like instant runoff, but for multiple winners instead of just one winner. It's called the single transferable vote. They've used it since the forties. And, and the beautiful thing about a proportional election system is that minorities can select themselves. It's not artificially imposed through sort of gerrymandering for good. And, and it doesn't depend on, on minorities, sorry, being concentrated in a certain area. So if you have, say, a minority like Asians who are spread around a little bit more evenly, they can have their representation just as other groups can. And I just think going forward, I, I think definitely the 10-1 was an improvement over the anti-proportional method that we had before. But this is not, this is not anything like that multi-member district system. This is a proportional system that we could adopt in the future, and I, I think it would be really good.
May I ask a question of you? Do you get just one vote or do you, if there's say 10 seats, do you get 10 votes? So you pick the top 10 you want? Is that how it works?
It's a ranked choice ballot and it goes by rounds. So you rank, you can rank however many candidates there are. But your first choice is all your full strength vote for the first round. And then like in instant runoff, if somebody comes in last and we're, we're still working on filling the next seat out of say 10 or five or whatever, that person gets eliminated and their votes get redistributed to the next preference on the ballot. And also there's a quota so that when somebody wins and meets the quota, they win that seat. But if they, if they had more than the quota, then that excess also gets redistributed for the next round.
Well, what's, how's the redistribution? If I, if I'm looking at the ballot, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the thing because we, I've never seen one of these personally. Just the old system in Texas where people got five votes and they could cast all five votes for one candidate or three for one and two for one or one for each or whatever. Is that how this works? Or is it, or do you, do you say my first candidate's this one, my second candidate's this one, my third candidate's this one? How's the actual ballot function? I'm just curious if we got the time to ask.
Yeah, it's a ranked choice ballot and, and you're saying what your preferences are, number one, number two, number three, however many you want to specify. And it works kind of like, like.
A rank order and 10 preferences. Okay.
Right.
If I may, sir, to your point, any CP president in 20 years, you know, the Voting Rights Act addressed mythology for the best representation, especially in the South because of the issues there. And I can tell you based on what we looked at for the past 40, 50 years, the senior member district did its job in terms of getting geographic and racial representation. The model you're talking about didn't pass muster. And I will say also, you know, Cambridge is a very difficult culture. I mean, for example, how's Boston? We're looking at populations where there was racial segregation, racial discrimination, and everything else I've said, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. In fact, people wouldn't want, they didn't want to discuss it. So I think from my perspective, I'm just going to see my district because it has, has an impact all over the South. And I think Austin, whether it is still in the South. So in terms of percentages, we're doing pretty well overall, but that model is very eclectic in my opinion. And I can tell you, out of about 2,000 branches, it didn't gain much muscle for a lot of reasons. I think there's a chance there are manipulations, uncontrollable things. When in reality, senior member district is fairly simple in the, the issues in this country we talked about. But I'm going to stick with the Voting Rights Act plus left of it and go with, with senior member district based on what we know about it because it's a proven system overall. Now, Austin unfortunately didn't go there for a lot of reasons. That's Austin's problem. But the law of large numbers is what I look at. The law of large numbers, I'll take senior member districts anytime over that kind of process. Just call it a one city model. Show me some, some work that's done in other places. Like Boston, for example, which, which, you know, Boston's history of problems. I think it's a much wider discussion, not just one city in terms of the actual results over a period of different places.
It has also been used in Australia and Ireland, and it was invented in the 1800s. There's a lot of information.
That's not very, Australia, you ever heard of Aborigines, black people there? They certainly want to agree to it. Ireland, not the best choice, not the best example. So those are the examples. You just, you just asked my other questions. I'm not interested in that kind of system. I'm sorry.
The Australian, I think the Australian Senate has representation for Aborigines and.
Well, well, look, look, they are underrepresented in, in that city. And also just the amount of racial discrimination there is a horror story. So that's, you're not going to get me with that one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dan can have a very long, detailed explanation about this. From here today, he's quite an expert on these options.
Can I make one comment? The, the group that is pushing a strong mayor is pushing a version of what Dan was talking about for all elections, but in districts. So that for instance, let's say we have five candidates for office in District Two. You, you, you vote, everybody votes one seat, but the, instead of having a runoff, the candidates, they, they have a system where somehow, and I don't understand the system, where if, if the, there's two candidates that don't get a majority, somehow they pick the winner by, based on somehow everybody's second choice and first choice. But you don't have a runoff. They have some preferential system. So that they add everybody's, they add your first choices and your second choices together and that makes you the winner. So what he's discussing is being proposed by this committee that's trying to do, do that. It's one of their five proposals. I looked at it and I didn't understand it, but it's, but it's, it's a version of what he's talking about to avoid runoffs.
Yeah, I've, I've been in touch with that, with that group actually. If I can just share a two minute video with you guys, it would really make it very clear how this works. So I'll send that in the chat. And if Ham would like to send it out, then you can understand really easily how it works.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could put that in the chat. Meanwhile, we, we are well over an hour and Zoom meetings tend to get difficult to stay focused on for over an hour. Joanne?
So I just wanted to, am I, yeah, I'm unmuted. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that what's being proposed is really a, a version of ranked choice voting and it's really unusual for in-ranked choice voting for a situation to occur where nobody gets 50% or more. So there, there is a contingency plan if that doesn't occur, and that's what this group is, is proposing. However, there seems to be some, a, a real challenge in cities like Austin and Houston and Dallas, large cities, where district lines in terms of our city council, for example, where district lines go across counties. And when you have district lines crossing counties, the tabulation of ranked choice voting can be really challenging. And we're not there yet, but that doesn't mean that ranked choice voting couldn't occur in smaller towns where they don't have this kind of a problem. And it would mean that they would be able to save a whole lot of money not having.
Runoffs.
A runoff, a runoff, and the drop off of the number of folks who come to vote in runoff. So it will be a challenge for, for cities like Austin for some time.
Well, and it doesn't matter the record as well. I'm on that committee, so I can assure you that will be thoroughly, thoroughly vetted. And it's not going to pass muster as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working with Andrew.
I'm, I'm, I'm deeply concerned and I'm not working with anybody and I can't even understand everything they've said because I'm a little busy, but I, this first choice, second choice thing is not easily understood by people. I'm not as, I'm not as deeply concerned about the turnout in the runoff, but the, the, what I am concerned about is manipulation of a process people don't understand. I've been told that there are cases where it has been manipulated so that somebody who, you know, gets 40% of the vote and somebody gets 30% of the vote, the guy with 30% of the vote ends up winning the election because of more second choices and whatever. And the bottom line is, is that I would like very much to understand this before I'm in favor of not having a second election where everybody gets to vote twice. I've seen this in some clubs where somebody got 48% of the vote on the first round and then ended up not being endorsed because in the second, everybody, the second choice was everybody's second choice and somehow ended up getting the majority in the second round. And that, that didn't, I didn't understand how the first choice lost. I mean, it just.
If you imagine those two people going into a runoff election, the second choice from the first election could win in the second election. Same, same point.
Yeah, and I've actually elected second choices as a professional campaign operative.
Yeah.
But it was because there was a campaign, not because somebody did mathematical magic. That was always. But it was because there was a campaign, not because uh somebody did mathematical magic, that was always.
Okay, okay.
Other me.
Let's, let's wrap this up. I do want to thank our panel members, Anthony, Nelson, and of course, PEC. Uh, this has turned out to be a more passionate, interesting discussion than we had planned, and I really appreciate that, um, and I'm, I'm glad people who were able to come and resist the football game uh came and found this very interesting, and we'll certainly put the, the video up and encourage other people to take a look at it.
It was an honor to be asked and a honor to participate. Nelson, it's always good to see you, my friend, and participate with you on something like this.
Likewise.
Joanne, any final thoughts?
Uh, no, I, I hope people will come and, and join us on uh October seventeenth, um, when we try to tackle um what we should, how we should, how we should react with our friends and family about what, about the outcome of the November third election.
With two guys.
Yeah, with two guys on your head. If you're on our mailing list, you will get the notice automatically. If you're not on our mailing list, I would suggest that you get on our mailing list. We don't send out very many um announcements, maybe one or two a month. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Mike, as well.
Thank you, folks. A great afternoon.
You guys, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.